Saint John's city councillors voted unanimously to expand the Spruce Lake Industrial Park on the outskirts of the city, near the community of Laurinville. The decision follows a series of three marathon public hearing sessions where local residents outlined concerns about damage to forests and wetlands, the safety of their residential well water supply, indigenous title over the land, and other issues. Only three people spoke in favour of the project during the public hearings. On Monday, this project passed its third reading.
That completes third reading for Laurinville.
That's correct.
For some perspective on this, I'm joined by Professor Jeff Martin of Mount Allison University. Jeff, your expertise includes municipal politics. How common is it for a project with so much public opposition at a public hearing to receive approval from city council like this?
Well, it's certainly a little bit unusual when you see the amount of of opposition and opposition to that's coming from a whole variety of different angles, like there's an environmental aspect and quality of life aspect and indigenous aspect. There's a, my colleague Ben Phillips here at Mount Allison has identified like a, an old growth tree. So there's some old growth forest here in terms of like, once that's gone, that's gone for good, you know, 400 year old trees. And, and particularly a little bit uncommon too, when you've got a ward system. So there are a couple of councillors who could pay a political price for this. Because, because Saint John is divided up into four wards, there's two councillors at large. There was a time when Saint John had a totally at-large council and in those kinds of circumstances, sometimes what you would call peripheral areas and rural areas are, can be underrepresented. But even despite the ward system and the fact that there were councillors there specifically who are beholden to those residents, council did vote unanimously. I mean, I think it reflects too, I mean, Saint John is geographically a very large municipality. It was before the municipal reform, it is now, there are a lot of peripheral areas. And, 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 and sometimes the, the commitment of the municipal organisation to, to development, like to this industrial park expansion is so strong that, that, that you can really overwhelm that kind of opposition because you've got a, you've got a city of tens of thousands of people with tens of thousands of voters. And the idea is that, well, these people will pay the price, but it's for the overall greater good. And, and, and we're not doing this in uptown or the south end of Saint John. We're doing this in an area that's relatively, with a relatively small population and so on, albeit one that has really roared here. So it's a little, a little surprising, but it also reflects to the, the municipal sector or the municipalities, their interest in growth, in industrialisation. And I think about it from what I've seen in the news, the media coverage. So apparently one possibility here is, excuse me, one possibility there, they're talking about what business might go in. One of them is a data centre, which sounds suddenly like a big power consumer. If you think about the AI, artificial intelligence, data centres. And, and, but there's very, there's very little, there's kind of an indifference to, well, where is that electricity going to come from? You know, and we already have this challenge in terms of expensive electricity and how do we, we don't have the political will yet to be, to be greatly expanding our wind and solar energy and so on, alternatives of fossil fuels. So, you know, there's, there's this, there is very, among conventional, I think, economic development people, there is a kind of like an indifference to some of the issues that are being raised and also like how viable or sustainable are some of these businesses that will go into this kind of operation?
To sort of speak for the city's side, they're claiming that they're sticking to Plan SGA, which outlined their growth for the coming years. Would you agree that this plan was good and that municipal cities should stick to these, regardless of what the environment and how things change? Or do you believe that there should be room to deviate from these plans?
Well, I can't speak to the specific plan, but I think one of our, one of our problems in municipal government in New Brunswick is, is municipalities do things like they develop municipal plans, they develop strategic initiatives, they, they do long range planning. And a lot of that is not well covered in our media environment. So people out in Laurinville are people here or people there, and this is again, not just a Saint John issue, but the, the state of the New Brunswick media is such that, that people are going to be unaware of what's in these plans until the rubber hits the road, until there is a major kind of impact or in, in, in their part of the city, right? And, and so, so I think, I think that, I think there, I think there tend to be flaws in, in how good is the outreach? And we know, I mean, we know that we're, we're in a very constricted media environment where, you know, provincial, provincial newspapers that used to publish six days a week and had a lot of pages and had a lot of local news, has have, they've been greatly reduced by the hedge funds and own them in terms of how much do they cover and how, how much, how much material is there? Everyone else has budgetary limits in terms of how much coverage they can pull off. And so, so we have a, we have a serious information deficit for people. They don't know what the long-term plans are. The, they, they are, the outreach is not necessarily all that strong. And so that people are surprised, I think there has to be deviation when people are hearing about this for the first time. Like if this, if this was a long-term plan, and this is not the first time, as I recall, there have been controversies about development in Laurinville. So, you know, so I think that, that, that the, I think there have to be deviations from a plan when the plan is not really well disseminated. And people don't know, and it's not like we really have a strong sense of consent, you know? And, and I don't know, I don't know how many municipalities or, or how many municipal politicians are really doing the outreach to try to engage people and get them involved. I think, I think there's a, I think we have, I think that's a problem in, in New Brunswick.
To speak on outreach, I do think that role was filled at some point by newspaper and local media, but I, I agree that it's, it's been dying. I think the liaison committees system is meant to somewhat build that. And the city did set up a liaison committee. However, residents said that it wasn't successful. They even called it actually a sham, that their voices were heard and then disregarded, that statements were changed, that the questions they asked were, said that they would be moved to a later date and then just not addressed. What does this say about the state of municipal democracy, about the community liaison system?
Well, I would have to confess that I'm not all that familiar with exactly how, how community liaison works in, 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 in the city of Saint John. But I, I am interested in, for example, the city of Halifax, where of course Halifax Regional Municipality was created in the 1990s by the John Savage Government. And, and it was, I mean, Halifax Regional Municipality is the size of Halifax County, it's rarely quite huge. And one thing that they have done is they, they have, they have, they have done something where, and this is sort of done in the, in the Halifax Charter, and that is they've created community councils. So for example, when there were land use issues, like they're going to do a rezoning or a change in land use, and of course, that's really what, what this industrial park expansion is about. It's about changing the municipal plan, it's about rezoning, about expanding, acquiring property, all this sort of stuff, not necessarily in that order. Well, Halifax has a system of, there's a certain number of these, one particularly in the core of the city, like the south end or west end of Halifax, and essentially it's a community council where there are people there who, who are consulted on planning issues, because otherwise you have a council that represents very broad swath, very broad geographical part in Nova Scotia, right? Because Bedford, Nova Scotia, the former town, city of Dartmouth, all of Halifax, Fairview, Halifax County. There's a lot of councillors there who have no real stake or connection to say the core of Halifax Peninsula. So, and, and, and how much, how much power, influence that community council has is really a matter to determine. But I, you can certainly, if you, if you look it up, like you can see some coverage in Halifax Examiner, for example, of the community council in the core of, of Halifax. But I think this is an idea too, that really should be developed in part, as part of the fallout of the municipal restructuring, where you have these really big cities where, and be, you have geographically big municipalities where you find people, people are making decisions about areas that they really have very little connection to. And, and giving some authority or greater role to people in this area, because the ward system has proven that that itself is not adequate. You've got ward councillors who are calculating that I'm going to vote in favour of this because this is a good thing and whatever rationales they have. So while I'm not, I'm not familiar with the community liaison system you're talking about, I do know there are models out there that can be more effective. And, and if you've got residents complaining about this model, then it needs to be made more effective.
People have characterized the Laurinville community as a sacrifice zone, that sometimes, you know, places have to be cut out and there has to be built up industry for growth around the city. Do you think this is a fair characterization that sometimes you sort of have to bulldoze over communities or make people's lives worse in certain areas for the benefit of the city on the whole? Is that calculation ethical or applicable anywhere?
Well, I do think, I do think that frequently, I think we need, we should be seeing greater efforts to accommodate concerns that people have. In other words, we're going to do something, but we're going to do it more over here, or we're going to, we're going to have a bigger buffer zones between your residential areas and our activities. I, I do think there is in New Brunswick, a tendency towards sacrifice zones, right? So as a result of the, 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 the 2024 municipal reform or 2023 municipal reform, the provincial government still has direct rule over a lot, most of the New Brunswick, most of the New Brunswick territories essentially under direct rule by the provincial government. And it is not municipalised, right? And, and so for example, you know, if they go ahead with the Cisson Mine near Stanley, New Brunswick, well, that's in provincially controlled territory. Right? So, so I think, I think that to avoid municipal interference, the provincial government directly rules a vast majority of New Brunswick territory. But even where there is municipal rule, like Saint John, I think there is a tendency, there is a tendency to treat relatively small populated areas as peripheries. And, and because they don't necessarily, they don't have a political clout and they don't really have anything like any legal recourse. So, well, there is a tendency, I think, in, in, in the, in municipal councils to, 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 to do things at their expense and maybe to go farther and just not put as much effort as they should into, into getting consent ultimately. So I do think, I do think that, I think there's some legitimacy for people to, to, to see, to see themselves as, as being treated as a sacrifice zone. And frankly, I mean, the city of Saint John, again, this is a New Brunswick phenomenon, but the city of Saint John, there, there are a lot of parts of the city of Saint John that I think have historically been sacrifice zones because it's an industrial city. And I mean, it's this interesting New Brunswick phenomenon, if one thinks of the city of Edmiston, for example, or, or the, the past, at least in the city of Merrimashie, not so much the present, but the past, or Dalhousie, New Brunswick, where, where heavy industry is right in the middle of the community. Right? It's a little like Sydney, Nova Scotia and, and Sydney Steel and all of that was very much right in the core of the city. So there's this tendency to have these industrial operations in the core of the city. And then people have this sort of suspicion that we have higher cancer rates and the air is not very good. So, I mean, I think people in East Saint John have paid the price for a long time for, in connection to like, say, the Irving Oil Refinery, just because inevitably it's, it's, it, there, there have been issues every so often in terms of things like air quality and things like that, or, you know, or, or whenever, whenever you've got a pulp mill in the city. So I think there's a certain, there's a certain tradition in, in cities to, to, to say, well, some people are going to have to sacrifice for the, for the greater good. And I suppose one might say that other, other cities that have chosen not to be industrial, like the city of Fredericton, are kind of like living off of the sacrifices being made by people in Saint John, because, because of the, the jobs and income and wealth is being produced by those industrial operations and, and, but not at the expense of people living in city Fredericton. So, yeah, I think there is some legitimacy there and it is, it is, I think, I think, all I, all I can really say is that there, there, there's always going to be some cost to any kind of development, particularly if it's in the old industrial realm or, you know, even light manufacturing, things like that. But I think not enough effort is typically made to, to, to work with people or to accommodate the, their, their, their concerns or their issues, because it's just sort of like full speed ahead, we need this development. It's kind of what you would call the growth machine theory of municipal politics, where it's just, you know, we need to generate as much tax-based increase as we can to, to keep the tax rate flat or cut it, and yet still have revenue growth, things like this. So that's sort of like the, 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 that seems to be the top priority of a lot of municipal mayors and councils and the, and the staff that ultimately advises them.
The residents of Laurinville spoke on this, actually. They argued that property taxes make up a large amount of the municipal budget. And yet the city council does seem to prioritise getting that industrial tax growth, which can sometimes be shaky. Would you speak on this?
Well, sure. I mean, I would say that one of the features we have now in New Brunswick is that this is perhaps more true of, and, and I can't speak to whether there, if there's, if there's newly municipalised, municipalised territory in the Laurinville area, like if that's, if that's where there's been some growth in the city of Saint John. But one of the phenomenon, one of the phenomena we see in New Brunswick overall is that the, the, when we had the municipal reform, the minister Daniel O'Leary said, you know, he said, there should, there, it's not going to be automatic that there will be tax increases for newly municipalised areas. Or people who were in a local service district and now they're in a municipality, because you, you should not pay more taxes if you don't get more services. What's happened however, is that these peripheral areas, again, whether it's, whether it's, say, particularly former local service districts, they, they have seen both their assessment, test value of their properties go up, and they've also seen their tax rates go up, even as tax rates decline in the core of the city. So the city, the cities or the municipalities are kind of treating those areas as peripheries, that they're raising the tax rates on them and cutting the tax rates in the core. So you're going to have people in Laurinville, whether they've been, whether they're newly in the city of Saint John, or whether they're long-term residents of the city of Saint John. Well, they're going to feel like they're, they're paying taxes and not getting the services or not getting the consideration that other people are getting in the city. And so, so I mean, I think that is an issue where, where people are sort of saying, like, we feel like we're paying a high level of taxation because of the value of our properties, which are going up and the tax rate, say, which may well be going up. And yet, we're, we're not really getting, we're not getting the value for that, we're not getting, we're getting, we're being exploited, basically, I think is what a lot of people would say. And, and that maybe will be what, way people in Laurinville are thinking about it, that they feel like they're, they're not getting the quality of life that they're really paying for through the tax system. Because, because, and in a sense too, that they're concerned that their, their, their property values will go down as a result of this expansion, which, which will mean ultimately the, the, the value of their housing, when they choose to sell it, will be, will be lower. And that's not what they kind of sign up for. So, so I think, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of validity, validity there.
To speak on some more concerns of the Laurinville community, some city councillors were on and are still on the board of directors of the industrial park. Some residents thought there was a conflict of interest there, would you agree?
Well, it, and it's a little hard to say, I mean, I think what can happen is, I mean, there's no doubt councillor, our councillors are appointed to things, right? So, you know, councillors will be appointed to a service, regional service commission, they'll be appointed to solid waste facilities or solid waste corporations. I think, I'm not, I'm not quite, I'm not necessarily quite as concerned about the conflict of interest issue as I would be concerned about the idea that, that the councillors are basically kind of captured by that organisation. By the words, that that becomes another opportunity for the councillors to, to, to hear the case for expansion. And, and there's no one in the room arguing against it, or arguing it should be directed somewhere else, or it should be, it shouldn't happen, it shouldn't happen so close to to, to residential properties, it shouldn't happen without consultation with indigenous people in terms of the whole question of, of unceded land. And so, so I think, I think, I think it's inevitable that councillors are going to be appointed to those kinds of bodies. But I think that, I think that, that, that doesn't mean they should necessarily become a captive of those bodies. I think it all comes down to the issue, I mean, and it's a perennial issue in government, but it's become, I think, more and more an issue in municipal government as well, which is, is, is the elected member, is the elected member representing the people to the municipal organisation? Or are they representing the municipal organisation to the elected, to the, to the people? In other words, which, which way does the influence go? And I think we see, what we're, what we're kind of seeing, I think, with, like, again, we have this, this phenomenon of the four-year electoral term. The bigger municipalities, the less personal municipal government, the, the tendency to shrink the size of councils and to increase the, 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 the number of electors represented by each municipal official. I know, all, all of this are sort of neoliberal themes of the last 40 and 45 years. These are all supposedly good things, but I think, I think they tend to create a democratic deficit. Because I think, you know, you get elected and then there's, unlike say a provincial government, there's no possibility of an early election because the government's defeated. So you get elected, you, you, you basically can do what you want for four years. That, that longer term, I mean, this is a bit of a, a, a tangent, but I think it's important for people to know that until, until 1974, I think it was, every municipal, municipal governments in New Brunswick had a two-year term. So there were elections every two years. And then from 1974 to 2004, it was a three-year term. And then only 2004 did they move to a four-year term. That was at the request of municipal politicians, not the people. And it means that if, if they do something you don't like in year one or year two, you've got to wait two years to vote them out. And, and, and that, and in addition, everything else, right? Codes of conduct, so that we see more and more regulations of municipal, the speech of municipal candidate, municipal elected candidates. And not just because of issues of discrimination or harassment, but possibly for other reasons as well. Even the, the tendency to, to increase the, the pay that municipal officials get, in a sense, also means that, that they want to, they're more likely to become career politicians and want to stay there. And also it means too, that if there's a threat of, it may make it easier for, for, for municipal, for staff, mayor, mayor, the mayor and council and the staff to control the outlier, the outlier or the dissenter, because, you know, they've got, they, they can potentially suspend you as a result of a code of conduct violation. And then you lose this pay, right? So I think there's all kinds of reasons to be concerned about municipal government. I think we're, we're seeing some of them illustrated here in the Laurinville case.
What about the issue of indigenous consent? Woolaston Grand Chief Rom Trembley issued an open letter opposing the project, noting that free prior and informed consent is required under the UN Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples. City staffs stated that all elected officials from First Nations were informed about the project and that, quote, "Chief Trembley is a traditional chief from an old system of governance appointed by grandmothers, but he is not an elected chief or councillor of a First Nation", unquote. Any comment on this approach to relations with indigenous communities?
Well, I think there, there certainly are these intentions, or I should say, there certainly are tensions between, say, traditional chiefs, chiefs and, and band council chiefs and so on. And there's diversity within indigenous communities. But you can, you kind of get the impression, you frequently kind of get the impression that, that the various orders of government, federal, provincial and municipal kind of like to deal with band councils and, and elected chiefs, because, because those are, those, they maybe think they can do better and get a better deal. Because among other things, maybe, maybe those people are, are potentially people who will be recruited to run for office in, in, say, provincial politics or whatever. And so, so it does, it does, for example, seem that, and you often see this too, if you think about Merrimashie Lake and the whole controversy there in terms of how to deal with that, where, you know, there's, there are indigenous people who are opposed, but you might have like, there, there might be a more positive view on the part of, say, band councils, right? So I think, I think there is a, I think, I think municipal governments are kind of inclined to be picking and choosing which indigenous leadership they want to listen to, because there's some indigenous leadership that maybe is going to be more cooperative. Or it's, it's, it's find the most cooperative indigenous leadership and then elevate them. So it's, it's, there's a bit of, perhaps a bit of divide and conquer here as well going on. But I mean, I think, I think that municipal governments in a sense are not going to take, I don't think they're generally going to take, beyond symbolism, they're not going to take, say, these indigenous issues very seriously unless someone forces them to. Like a provincial government, for example, or the courts, and I don't think we're there yet.
Speaking on other concerns of residents, residents have complained that they don't know what kinds of companies will be established at the industrial park. One city councillor, Brent Harrison, reportedly stated in a blog post that the city have received two letters of intent, one for a data centre that you mentioned earlier, and the other for a hydrogen ammonia processing facility. He later changed his blog post to advanced manufacturing processing facility and said his original post was a mistake. Is there a problem of transparency here of the residents not knowing what is going up in their community?
Well, I'll be fairly brief on this one, because my time at this point is limited. But I will say that I think, I think it is in the nature of these things of a private sector investment that, that you, you, it is certainly not transparent what, what businesses are most likely in the next couple of years to go into the, the facilities. And, and it's also not transparent what's going to happen in five or 10 years, because, because businesses can be sold and property can be sold. And, and once the thing is established and once you created, if you, if you, if you, if you created universal rights in, is a, you know, if, if you're zoning, you've, you've zoned in such, such a way that, you know, that it's not being done by development agreement, but it's being done by zoning, that, you know, that, that, say, then the city might not even really be able to control what, 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 how that land is bought and sold. Again, it, maybe it can, but, you know, frequently, once, once something is owned in a certain way, it, it's, it's, it's not necessarily even within the city's control regarding what happens there. Beyond, beyond provincial rules on environmental impact and things like that. So no doubt there is, there, 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 there isn't going to be, there isn't going to be the level of political accountability and control once this all takes off. Because, because private property owners have rights and that is to say, businesses, private property owners that own businesses have rights and then it becomes expensive to expropriate those rights from them. So you see controversies, we see controversies all the time, but one thinks about like the, the, in, in eastern New Brunswick, the, the foul orders from the, the shell recycling plant in, in, along the Northumberland Strait there in, in eastern New Brunswick. Or we had, we had at one time, something called the Met's Hog Farm, which created a lot of, was outside of a municipality in eastern New Brunswick. They created a lot of foul orders and so on, concerns about sewage and effluent and things like this. And, and it, and governments sort of throw up their hands and say, there's nothing we can do about it. They're, they're meeting all the requirements and this is just, this is just the, the sort of, in a sense, again, the price of development, so the, the sacrifice zone issue.
So briefly, could you talk on the environmental impact assessment? Some people have called it a rubber stamp, what is your take?
I personally think we're in a kind of an environment right now, no pun intended, where I don't, I, I, I think there is a, I think there's a tendency on governments, whether they are conservative or liberal. I think there's a tendency to, to, to prioritize development and environmental impact processes are there. But I think they're more for reformative purposes. I, I, I'm not terribly optimistic about, about them really changing, really preventing something from happening or really changing. I don't think that's really how things work in New Brunswick. I think the emphasis, the emphasis is very much on development and not necessarily smart growth, but growth. And, and a reluctance of government to stand in the way of a private sector actor, provincial and municipal. And I don't think that, I don't think municipalities or the provincial government for that matter necessarily drive a very hard bargain when it comes to what, what are the expectations of in terms of major development projects? That, that also has an impact in housing too. You know, how much, how much low rent housing or medium rent housing do we get when someone puts up, when someone gets a concession to build a seven or eight story apartment building? And, and we suddenly see the laws being changed to allow these buildings. And 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 we suddenly see the laws being changed to allow these buildings to become higher and all this kind of thing, more intensive development, things like that. You know, so I think there's a tendency to say, we want the growth, we want the increase in the tax base and, and and, you know, I mean, remember, everyone should remember the city of St. John was a city that, that asked the provincial government to, to change the law to give, to give Irving and Repsol the tax break on the LNG facility. That was during the era of the Lord government. And and without the due diligence of knowing that, that this was a highly, that this was going to be a highly profitable development that didn't need a tax concession to happen. So there's a history there and eventually, eventually the, the, the law was revoked because it all came out exactly what had happened. And 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 there was a, I mean, it's very interesting, we have a long history, in other words, of, and this was, that was an old nineteen fifty style special backroom deal that the, that the city of St. John went, entered into. And this is, this is what in, 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 this is in the two thousands, this is not ancient history. So, you know, that, that I think, I think that I, I, I don't think, I, I don't, I don't put much faith in those processes. And I think that there are a lot of good people, I think, working in them, but I think they're constrained and I think, I think this, I think, things are running at a green light, I think, once the private sector developer wants to, to go ahead.
I've been speaking to Professor Jeff Martin of Mount Allison University. Thanks for joining MB Media Co-op today.
Yeah, you're welcome. Have a good day.